Good morning. It is nine AM and at this time I would like to call San Mateo County Planning Commission Meeting of July twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Mercedes, may we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Here.
Commissioner Serrano-Cuern?
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Here.
Chair Hutham?
Here. Next, we have public comments. At this time, public may speak on any matter that is not on today's agenda. Do we have any speakers, Mercedes?
We do not have any speakers.
In that case, we'll close the public hearing and move on to our consent agenda. We have consideration of the minutes of Planning Commission hearings for June twenty-one and July twelve, twenty-twenty-three. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Aye.
Commissioner Serrano-Cuern?
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Aye.
Motion back, Harris.
I. I said. Okay, so minutes approved unanimously. We move on to the regular agenda. Item two on the regular agenda, could you please read that in Mercedes?
I have number two. The owner and the applicant is Alexandra Baggerman. The file number is PLN
Good morning, Planning Commission. My name is Erica Adams and I'm here. PLN two thousand twenty dash zero-zero four-six-seven. This is an item that was continued from the May twenty-fourth Planning Commission with with the intent that the applicant and the owners of the adjacent, the neighboring property who granted an easement could further discuss the possibility of revising the easement. There were two versions of development submitted. The first one did not have all of the development within the easement and then the proposal in front of you now has all of the development within the easement. So the project itself is construction of a five thousand seven hundred and forty-two square foot single-family residence. There is construction of a access driveway, which is within an easement, a dedicated easement from the adjacent parcel, removal of twenty-four trees and a grading permit for one thousand eight hundred and thirty square feet.
I mean, cubicles.
Well, in general, I'll just say, I don't know that we need to revisit all of the items from the last hearing, but the applicant and the adjacent property owner did meet. They, at that time, were not able to come to an agreement. Subsequent to that meeting, the Roberts, who are the owners of the easement, have been working with their counsel and some other consultants to come to an easement that they believe that they would like to support. That, as far as I am aware, has not been presented to the applicant and the applicant has expressed his desire to have the Planning Commission rule on the project that is before them and to allow any additional subsequent agreements to modifications of the easement to fall under the condition of approval that allows for minor modifications without coming back to the part, to the hearing. And so since there have been activities that I have not been apprised of, I'm just going to allow the applicant and the property owner, the easement owners, to discuss, present anything more because unless you have any questions for me.
Thank you. Thank you, Erica.
There was some additional correspondence I think you sent your way.
Correct. If commissioners don't have any questions at this time, I, do you?
One short question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Ketchum.
The. Chesham. Is that a private, is that in the county road system? I mean, what policies are in place if there, with all this construction traffic to repair the road or whatever there's concern about?
So, from what I understand, the Department of Public Works has a standard requirement that roads have to be in the same condition pre-construction and post-construction. So they will need to encroachment permits from the Department of Public Works to stage and have the equipment there when, you know, on certain days and such. And so that would be monitored and there is an inspection after the work is concluded.
I think the, the conditions require the staging not to be on that street because of the narrowness. I thought I read that, not sure. But my, my concern, the concern from the neighbors about the low overhanging trees, the narrowness of the street and all that, and that they had to pay to install that, I just wondered what policies are in place to protect that and repair needed after the.
Well, those, as I said, that, that is, it's really a Department of Public Works, more than a planning office situation. And so Public Works does monitor the roads. And as far as trees, I don't, you know, I, if they need to trim trees, then that would be, if any of those trees are heritage or not accounted for, they need to get a tree trimming permit and an arborist would review the trimming that would need to per, if necessary for that site, for that road, because those would be not included with the trees that are on the property. I don't know per se that, that, usually I think they try to have, when their constraints in construction, they use smaller vehicles from, you know, what I've seen in the past. So I don't know that those things are necessarily going to be triggered, but if there, if there did need to be tree trimming, anything over six inches requires a tree trimming permit and, and Public Works would be monitoring the road condition.
So even though there's no actual trenching for utilities in the road to be repaired, it's just construction traffic, that would still be monitored and re.
They have to, you know, to use the road, you need a. You need a. Yeah, encouragement permit. I said it earlier. Encroachment permit. And so that is run and managed by the Department of Public Works. They're out there checking to make sure that things, you know, they will respond to concerns about, you know, if there's a concern, they could call the Department of Public Works and have them evaluated.
So this is the case regardless of whether the road itself is in the county maintains road system?
If it's private, then the private property owners would have to. And probably the Baggermans would be, you know, part of that party if it's a privately community-held road. But if it's, if it's county road, then, then that is what needs to happen.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Then I would like to have the applicant present their part.
Mr. Baggerman? The applicant, Alex Baggerman, is here. His team, Andrei Bellorusi, is on Zoom and he would like to take these fifteen minutes to speak.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello?
Hi, Andrei. Yes.
Hi, morning. Thanks so much for taking me over Zoom today. I would probably take only five minutes and basically by way of general introduction, I look up the manual for the planning committee and there's a page thirty-six, it actually tells about procedure when the, after the hearing should be granted or continued. And it basically looks like conduct of applicant. Let's see if he is actually kind of prompt amendment. If there's a hope that you're going to comply with the recommendations, there's a pattern, then it's actually the combination denied or it's continued. So here we have a civil situation. We have applicant, which is my client, Baggerman, and the Roberts, the neighbors, and it's been consistent pattern of kind of a lack of any kind of care and consideration and they're doing it at the very last minute. Let me remind, this is the public meeting number four. So it's tremendous waste of resources, efficiency and time. And for the economy, I think the best case scenario, if the vote is taken today and the project is approved as submitted. And to bolster my claim, let me kind of explain the context of that. So there, there's a very rough terrain and by building the road, there's a way to provide access to both parcels. So the owners have an easement agreement allowing to use each other's land to build a road accessible for both parcels. So the original plan, my client submitted like almost two years ago, was rejected and because it, it would call for enlargement of easement. And prior to that, the owners, my clients and the Roberts, they did have an easement agreement which allow for enlargement of easement if it needs to be done for building a road. So it was kind of unreasonable part of the Roberts. So anyway, because they couldn't get anything from them, my client decided to build the road within the easement and then they presented it. Then it was kind of wake-up call for Roberts. They say, no, 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 we don't do this. We're going to go back to Plan A. Then they disappeared again. Then it was like totally lack of communication. So my client said, you know what, we cannot waste any more time. So they introduced that project, which is arguably cuts off access to the Roberts land. However, they promised in writing, verbally and otherwise, saying that they will adjust it once it's approved. And there's a allowance by the, by the staff of the county that if it's approved in principle, that minor modification could be done without any future hearings. So there is no any kind of risk for Roberts because Baggermans is actually going to get any better project with this accommodation for Roberts. But however, the part in the whole behavior, like even yesterday, everything was sent very last minute, like two hours prior to deadline, five o'clock. I have to kind of speed up to send two letters, which we did around four PM and then I think it's in your desk, explaining the kind of background and the context of that problem. But basically, I don't want to take much time. I want to leave some time for my client, Mr. Baggerman, to present his, his evidence. But all in all, there is no risk for Roberts. My client is willing to work with them within either easement to enlarge that. They've been very prejudiced because of this delay. They close to retirement age. They want to go ahead with continuing and build their dream retirement home. And then Roberts has been unreasonable. And then that manual tells that, you know, that if somebody is unreasonable, then there should be no continuous. But in this case, you know, no continuous should be taken vote and up and down vote and decide if that project can be adopted. And then by way of illustration, even like yesterday letter, it says some report from civil engineers. And then this is actually absurd and wrong because it's actually puts the Roberts in the worst situation, worse off compared to proposed one in terms of easement access to their land. So it shows, it's like very unhostile, very last minute with no consideration, just to kind of almost prevent my clients from, from building that. And the same time, they're already enjoying the road, they're already, you know, thinking about development. But at the same time, they just have any kind of a planning or consideration and totally, you know, I was saying, practical people who impede development for my clients, who had the right to develop. And then they not doing anything illegal. They can build within the easement, up to the codes and then just move on with their life. But because of this, it's been, you know, rough two years with waste of resources. All right. So I just, I think I'm kind of rest my case. If, if you had a chance to read the letters, it's, it's because of all the points. I don't want to waste anybody's time. But again, there is no risk for Roberts. They can apply for appeal within ten days and resolve the issue why you're breaking out the old wrinkles of the, you know, particular design. But if they ask for continuous today and, and the hearing be continued, it's going to delay the project for another six, twelve months, which is unacceptable and unfair. It's been, you know, always waiting for nothing and we back to the square one. And then the pattern of interactions, you know, between my client and them shows that it could be continued and finetum. So I just want to prevent this and then committee should look at that and prevent this for a petition. Otherwise, it'll be here another two or three times and, you know, it's, it's unreasonable. Let's see. So the most efficient way is just take up and down vote today and then decide and, and grant this project and we all move on and then we have still time and then allowance of, of the staff to revise the project to accommodate access to the Roberts and it's most practical outcome. So please do not delay vote. Take it today and then we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, both Andrei and Erica stole my thunder. But I, I want to add a couple of more details. During the last two months, the commission granted us to negotiate with Roberts, we did our best trying to, to reach to them and to reach, to reach some, some conclusion that works for both parties. Unfortunately, during, in these two months, we haven't received any practical or actionable information from our neighbors. Up until last moment, as you, as you said in communication, that you, you already have, we didn't know what Roberts would like to do as far as building the road and granting easement or not granting the easement. They, at the very last moment, they sent in consultancy report and I believe the reviewer prefers the original design. He submitted eighteen months ago, as you heard from Andre's speech, that a couple of minutes ago. And we already agreed to, to go to original design multiple times. Last time, the planning department facilitated a meeting with us and Roberts, where Roberts, back in, back in January, where Roberts, in front of the planning department staff, requested that we go back to the original design. The day consultant, at the very last moment, confirmed it the best option for both parties. The planning department was really surprised because it took two minutes for the whole, whole conversation because I promptly said yes, what documents you need from us. And then provided all documents to Roberts in a matter of hours. And then they just disappeared. I hadn't heard from them up until the meeting that we had back in May. I, I don't think it's fair to us. I, I think moreover, for us to be burdened with additional conditions that I, I believe Roberts would like to put on approval of our case based on consultancy report that nobody had a chance to properly review because it was submitted at the very last moment and that it was done on purpose, just to deny us an opportunity to properly review and properly to respond to. What else? It's, it's, it's been pretty stressful last two years. We put our best efforts, we we complied with, we worked diligently with fire marshal, we reported in terms of this, environmental house, public works. We never asked for any exceptions, never. We, we, we made sure that our project complies with all county requirements. And for not fault of ours, it's just plain either inability or to be honest, unwillingness to be reasonable and come to the mutually beneficial solution of, by, by our neighbors. We're stuck here in this purgatory, as Andrei said. Our county resources are wasted. We spent enormous amount of money on redoing our project, on legal fees, only because they don't want us to build next to their house. They, they want joy solitude. It's, it's a beautiful place. It's very secluded. I don't understand their desire, but at the same time, I think we entitled to, to make use of our properties. And with that, I would appreciate, as Andrei said, you give our project considerations and what on today. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant? I have a question. So, so what is, what are you proposing at this time that we want to, that you are looking for Planning Commission to approve?
I, I would like to request flying commission to approve our project as submitted today. Because currently, there is no other workable option. We, we haven't heard anything from our neighbors for two years, in writing or otherwise. That, that's the option they want to execute. So you, you have our plans. You have all the agencies already reviewed our plans, including fire marshal, environmental house, public works. They all sign off on our project. As Erica said, the driveway are fully enclosed into existing easement. We are not encroaching on anybody's territory. So we would like to proceed this, with the project as is. And that, as Andrei said, we are willing to find a workable solution for both parties, but we cannot. I, I agree to all their demands, but it, it doesn't, it doesn't move needle because they, they did just request thing and then disappeared. I'm, I'm yet to see any plans from them. So I'm, I'm, I'm ready to, to, to change it, but give, give, give me the plan that I can, I can consider and present to you guys because I don't have anything to present to the county as a solution that parties found. We, we have our two plans. They indicated they, they didn't like the original plan that now they, now they indicated three times that they like the original plan. But I haven't seen them writing. They, they, they mentioned in passing disappear and then come here with lawyers, consultants. So I'm not sure what, what else we can do.
Thank you.
And I'm, if, if you guys ask us to provide any additional information or do changes to the project, that's what we've been doing for the last three years. But at this point, I'm, I just, I, I don't know what, what, what else we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Ketchum.
So you're saying you're willing to, according, you know, backing up to the previous hearing where it was clear that during the building permit stage, it could be an adjustment to this road access design. So you're open to that and?
Yes, I, I, in writing, I confirm it four times.
Okay.
Andrei, who is our attorney, communicated this three times over the last two months to their attorney. And, and we haven't heard anything back.
So I guess my point is, the, my concern at the past meeting was, you know, that this is an access road which blocks access because of the wall, you know. So you're, you're open to resolving that part of it so that?
It's, it's, it's hundred thousand dollars cheaper for us. So I don't have money to throw out just in spite of, just in spite of other people. It's, it's.
Okay, so, so yes, you're willing to do that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
No, thank you. So at this time, I'll have, open it to the public. Mercedes? We have speakers online remotely wanting to speak.
We do not have any hands raised at this time.
So we have speakers in the chamber?
We do have some speakers in the chambers. We will start with Jim Toby Lee and is it blondes or blaze engineering, engineering?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Please, please state your name and as a reminder, you will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
My name is Jim Toby. I'm with Liam Braze Engineering. I'm a civil engineer. You guys have seen me here before. I have been hired by the neighboring, to the Baggermans, the Roberts, to take a review of the plans that were submitted and see, give my opinion on how it affects their land. I apologize for the timing of letters and everything. I was just hired in the last few weeks, have been trying to go through all the various plans, the previous plans, the current plans, and provide recommendations for what really should be done on this property. Essentially, my review of this plan and both sets of plans is it is putting a huge undue burden on the Roberts. And what I mean by that is the Roberts have been presented with two versions of a plan. One is put a ten-foot wall right on the property line or right on the easement line in their property and block all, all vehicular access and usable rights to their property. Or they could go ahead and do some grading, a very steep grading, two-to-one grading, two-to-one meaning two vertical or one vertical, two horizontal, and grade thirty feet beyond easement onto their land and still have no vehicular access onto their property. So it's, no matter which way we look at it, it's a no-win for the, for the Roberts right now. If you look at the plans that have been submitted, the property line, the fire truck turnaround significantly enters onto the Roberts property. Yes, there is an easement and people have been trying to create right up into that easement, but the options are either a full ten-foot retaining wall or grading an additional thirty feet onto their property. And that's just not acceptable to them. They lose all rights or access either way they look at it. What I would say is that looking at the plans, and I apologize again for the timing, I wrote in the letter that I, we've submitted to neighbors, it would be much more conducive to rotate the entire driveway, fire truck turnaround and all away from the Roberts property. It's doable. It puts all the, most of the roadway and grading back onto the, the Baggerman's property and away from the Roberts and will provide them much more possible easement and access onto their property as time goes on. The Roberts have been now forced to hire engineers and lawyers and stuff to look at these plans. And that's part of why the timing has occurred in the way it has. So I think what really needs to happen here is that the property needs to have a further study. The roadway needs to be looked at much more carefully and especially in how it basically impacts the Roberts. And come back to you guys. Because what's going to happen is, no matter which way we go, we're going to have to significantly alter the, the grading, push it to the other side of the property and provide the Roberts their legal and, you know, personal access to their own personal property. It affects their development rights. It affects their usability of the land it is, is right now. And again, with these small lot, these two options, it's just not workable for them. But I'm happy to answer any questions you may have in relation to that.
Thank you, Mr. Toby.
Our next speaker is Kamaz Steinmetz, followed by Ronald, Ronnie Roberts.
Good morning, Chair Commissioners. I'm Kamaz Steinmetz, Legal Counsel for the Roberts. So I think what we have here really is a story, a repeated story of haste makes waste. And we're asking that you not perpetuate it today. In their haste, the applicants prepared driveway plans for a common driveway to their parcel and my client's parcel. In their haste, the applicants prepared driveway plans for a common driveway to their parcel and my client's parcel without consulting or engaging my clients in a joint plan that would serve both properties as originally intended by the reciprocal easements that they granted each other. In their haste, these plans exceeded the bounds of the easement my clients granted the applicants requiring grading on my client's property outside the easement area. In their haste, these plans were submitted to the county without my client's knowledge, and my clients only learned of this at a design review hearing when the Public Works Department pointed this out. In their haste, when my client stated their preference that the driveway remain within the bounds of the easement, these plans were revised to contain the driveway within the easement bounds without taking the time to inform my clients what this would result in, which is a 10-foot retaining wall that, as Jim Toby explained, effectively cuts off access to their property and may ultimately make it impossible to develop that parcel altogether, as it will take up significant developable building area. In their haste, although the applicant stated today that they prefer the original plans, they're instead asking you to approve the revised version of the plans and work out agreeable modifications later at the staff level outside of your purview as the planning commission with discretion over the grading permit. Taking this requested action would ultimately result in appeal to the Board of Supervisors, which would be a significant waste of time and resources for all parties, most especially county staff. Instead, we ask you to continue the hearing, as requested, to allow the applicant to submit the original version of the plans with the recommendations made by Liam Braze. And county staff has confirmed that this review would take at most 30 days and likely could be expedited. Without these modifications, and if you wish to take action today, alternatively, we ask that you approve the project on the condition that the driveway revert to the original plans with the modifications recommended by Liam Braze. And I've included a sample condition, a revised condition in the letter I submitted yesterday. Without these modifications, and as stated in my letter yesterday, we believe the required findings of approval for this grading permit cannot be made. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kamaz.
Our next speaker will be Ronnie Roberts, followed by our last speaker, Jennifer Larson.
Hi there. Thank you. Alex mentioned we're just trying to stop them building their house, which is, is not true. All we really want is to be able to get to our property by way of vehicle. And the plans in front of us at this time, don't, don't offer that. Baggerman's have at least three times the amount of property we do, so we're, don't understand why the burden and the X and the grading all has to be pushed under our property. That's why Jim is helping us come up with a plan that can rotate this and maybe push a little bit of this grading on their property, and of course, there'll still be some of it on ours. I, I think that's, that's basically it. The other thing is, we were very timely in the beginning of this process as far as getting together. We paid for our own lawyer to get paperwork and get the easement so they could start to draw their plans in the first place. I, I never really received any gratitude or mention of that, just the delays in finding out what's happening here and trying to understand how we can make this work for both of us. So that's, that's all we want. We just want to be able to get to our property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Our final speaker will be Jennifer Larson.
Hi, Commissioners. I'm Jennifer Larson. I am neighbors to the Roberts and live at 351 Chesham, which is the end of the road. I'm really sort of a representative for the neighbors. So to answer your question, Commissioner Ketchum, it is private road. All the neighbors paid to pave this road before my husband and I purchased the property. It is already, if anyone ever comes to this road, it is already crumbling on the side. It is a narrow 11, 12-foot wide road that the side is crumbling into the creek, particularly because of the erosion of the winter rains. We, as neighbors, understand that we own this. It is our property. We are required to maintain it. We are organizing ourselves as a neighborhood in order to figure out how do we maintain this road. However, doesn't take a lot of research to figure out that the construction vehicles that are going to be required to build this property will further damage the road in a way that is unacceptable. I live at the end of the road. If you in any way damage this road, block this road, you're limiting my access to get to work. I'm a doctor. I have to go to work. I have to take my kids to school. An emergency vehicle needs to be able to access my property at all times. This construction project, I mean, the garbage truck blocks the road on a weekly basis. They will block our road. They will damage our road. And at this point, there is no plan that has been presented to the neighbors of how we are going to do this. We don't want to stop their property. We understand they want to join. If anyone wants to join the, our street, it's wonderful. But we don't want our, our way of life and our road and access to my property to be blocked by them building their house. So it's just trying to figure out what is that plan? No one is communicating this plan to us. No one is explaining to us how the road is going to be maintained through this, what is going to be year-long, years-long process to build this home. So that way, I can continue to access my house is the only way in and out. It was a little bit dicey with the water. All this, the end of the road was blocked with water. It's already lived through diciness, and this is very scary to the neighborhood because we don't know when you damage our road, how we're going to get to and from our house. And so that's sort of the neighbor's concern. I'll stop at that. If anyone has any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Larson.
That is the end of public comment.
Okay. So since there are no more public speakers, so I'll close the public comments. Would you like to respond to?
Yes, thank you, Chair Gupta. I'll keep it brief and let our council speak about easement issues if the commission so desires, but from my perspective, what we have is a civil dispute regarding easement provisions. And this department and this commission needs to render a decision based on the regulations that we're charged with implementing. And we do so in a manner that acknowledges existing legal boundaries. And while I think everybody is interested in working towards a driveway design that meets both parties' needs, we've been asked to render a decision on a project that's proposed based on the current legal boundaries of easements and properties. And this department believes that the Baggerman's do have a legitimate right to make a reasonable use of their property. And so we, you know, are, continue to be open to alternative driveway designs that best meet both parties, but with all due respect to the Roberts, we believe the Baggerman's deserve a decision on their application. And so we continue to recommend that the commission approve the project as proposed. With regard to the roadway constraints and the challenges of maintaining private roadways, the Baggerman's is an additional member of that roadway group will have an opportunity to contribute towards that roadway's maintenance and improvements. If the planning commission is concerned about the construction-related impacts, I think we have an opportunity. I haven't gone through the conditions in enough detail to know whether or not they need to be supplemented to require some sort of staging plan for construction that demonstrates that construction can be conducted in a manner that addresses access and, you know, emergency access needs. I think we have an opportunity to beef up the conditions if that's a concern to the commission. And I'll stop there and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Steve.
Questions for Steve? Yeah, the private road aspect of it. We see this on the midcoast. I'm familiar with this, you know, where the neighborhood has to put in a road to the county standards and then the county will adopt it and maintain it. So that has not happened here. And it sounds as though the neighborhood is just on their own. The county has like nothing to do with it. And, and that's my impression was saying, and also, so in this case, I, I could see how that might be kind of overwhelming for the, for the groups, since the road was put in probably by previous owners and they don't have that history.
Right. And I guess what I'm saying is, as the county, we're not trying to say, hey, we've got nothing to do with this, that we have an opportunity to condition the development in a manner that ensures the construction of the project appropriately ensures emergency access and respects the ability of the neighbors to get in and out of their properties during construction.
Okay.
Hey.
Questions?
No, I just, I think we're now in deliberation, so. I, I think that, based on, you know, from the last meeting to now, basically, the needle didn't move one way or the other between the two parties here. So. And I'm going to agree that the the applicant at this point probably needs a resolution one way or the other from this commission. So either approve it or disapprove it and move it forward for whatever happens next, appeals to the board supervisors or whatever else they're going to have to do on their own. That's my take for this, at this moment.
Commissioner Hanson?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Ramirez. No need to kick this down the road. We should give it an up or down. And then, you know, we're in, we should be involved in the civil side of this, you know. Does the plan meet or doesn't meet all the conditions for all parties that need legally required?
Well, I, I would hope to avoid an appeal to the Board of Supervisors. I'm sure they would appreciate that, and I guess that's part of my thoughts here. It's just, it, it would seem that either way we vote is going to be appealed to them.
Yes.
And that's unfortunate. That's part of my motivation and, in wanting the continuance the first time. I could see how the, you know, this last minute letter from the engineer, the Roberts. You know, that they're going in the right direction on the modification. It would seem to me like what got me the first time we saw this was that, you know, this is an access road and it blocks access and I just, I couldn't see it as far as the grading permit goes. And I, I haven't looked at the first plan that doesn't, you know, presumably that didn't have a retaining wall in the way. And as far as the detailed condition added by the Roberts attorney suggested for, for a decision today, it seems to wander off into, you know, maybe just, you know, major adjustments, which didn't seem something you could leave to the, at the building permit stage. And so and yet here's this, even the applicant agreeing, oh, we could go back to the first version, didn't have a retaining wall. And it was just right there. It's right there. We could somehow get that agreement today to hold fast for the building stage to finish that out. I think that's the main thing for me. I, I can't see allowing an access road that has a 12-foot retaining wall at the end so that they can get to their property. The fine tuning details, you know, that's not something I want to delve into. So, I don't know.
So are we vote, if we, if a motion comes up, is this with the access road without the retaining wall or one with the retaining wall?
So my understanding is that because there has not been any change to the easement boundaries, that the wall is necessitated by the applicant's need to stick within the existing easement boundaries. So what you're being asked to vote upon is a project that has its accessway with an illegally established easement, but using that easement necessitates a large retaining wall. If they are able to reach a resolution on a revised easement and revised driveway alignment, staff believes we can authorize that change as a minor modification to the permit you're being asked to approve today. So it is unfortunate that it's looking like an appeal to the Board of Supervisors, but honestly, I would tell the board the same thing. So this is a civil matter that they need to resolve. Staff is willing to accommodate the resolution. Baggerman's are entitled to a decision on their application, and it's up to them to work out this access issue. And I wish them luck and I recommend that we take action on the project.
So, so do I understand from what you said, Steve, that if they, if the two parties choose to work on this, because the way I'm looking at it is, nothing has changed. We, we are still looking at the same proposal that we had in May.
That's correct. Not for lack of effort. I am interested in both parties and, you know, I, I can't get in between that and understand what's falling apart there, but the, the, I think where you're headed is wanting confirmation from staff that should they be able to come to a resolution that will be able to accommodate that resolution, and the answer is yes.
Yeah. So, so if, if they choose to do that rather than going through an appeal, it can be done without.
It can be done without.
If we go, even if we go ahead and approve it today.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, understood. Okay, so do I have any other comments, deliberations, motion?
I, I think I would like to start the motion on this at this time and see if we have support for it. I move that the planning commission determine that the project is categorically exempt from Secua Brooklyn Section 15303, that point three, new construction of small structures and approve the design review permit and grading by making the findings and adopting the conditions of, sorry. Conditions of approval in attachment A. That's the motion.
Steve talked about the road plan too, you know.
Yes, I've had an opportunity to take a look at the conditions and I refer the commission to condition number 16 that requires, among other things, the applicant shall ensure that no construction-related vehicles impede through traffic along the right-of-way on Devonshire Boulevard and Chesham Avenue. All construction vehicles shall be parked onsite outside of the public right-of-way or locations which do not impede safe access.
Right, so we do have the condition existing in our.
Okay. So do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Mercedes roll call, please.
Commissioner Hanson?
Hi.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Hi.
Commissioner Serrana Kwan?
Hi.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Hi.
Chair Gupta? Aye. Motion passes.
So motion passes. Thank you all. So we move on to item three. So we move on to item three. Mercedes, could you read that for the record?
Item three is Philippe Branche and Francois Monet. Uh, the applicant is Fred Herring. The file number is PLN two zero one nine dash zero zero four zero zero.
Uh, good morning, planning permission, county staff and members of the public. My name is Erica Adams. I'm presenting PLN two thousand nineteen dash zero zero four zero zero. It's an application for a single-family residence and it will have the address of five seventy My Oak Lane. Well, the owners are Philippe Branche and Francois Monet and the applicant is Fred Herring. As previously just described, the application is consideration for a major modification for a design review permit. It now includes a non-conforming use permit and always had a grading permit. The proposed house is two thousand four hundred and sixty-six square feet with an attached four hundred and sixty-eight square foot two-car garage, a four hundred and ten square foot pool and six hundred and forty square foot cesspool dwelling unit. The project also includes four hundred and eighty cubic yards of grading. The, uh, project is located in the unincorporated area of Imola Hills in San Mateo County. And the permits required, we just went through design review, non-conforming use permit and a grading permit. This is the subject parcel. I'm gonna uh, skip ahead to some of the points. Now would be, you can see the parcel there. You see that it has a curve, um, curved front. And later, well, up in the staff report and, um, I mentioned how that curve forces the and and the slope of the parcel, parcel has a cross slope uh, more than thirty percent and the garage is placed at the front of the property. But because of the curve and you need a ten-foot setback like from the the paper street. It's at the paper street there and on the left side. And that, so it forces the house to be further back where there's a full, you know, where you can have a full footprint for regular-sized rooms. And so that creates the separation that's that is shown. This is, I'm sorry, these are some photos here. So this would be like where the garage would be placed. And then, um, we're just moving like to the right. And so this structure is where that, um, little access entry to the parcel that's to the rear. That's where a dilapidated garage is. And so when you look at the site plan, you can see, um, the, as I said, the garage, you have this larger setback at the lower portion of the of the illustration and and the area that's that's you know, buildable for a house because you also have the twenty-foot setback from the is 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 further back in the property. Um, the site plan includes the pool, which has a three-foot setback in the rear. The house, which the main house, um, which has meets the combined twenty-foot side setback has seven and a half on the right side and then, um, twenty-five feet on the on the right side down to the lower. And then the, um, the structure is connected with a roof and a walkway there. These are the elevations of the of the house. Um, the parcel, as you saw from the illustrations, slopes down from the street. So on the top right corner, you see the, um, front elevation. It's it's low profile and the bulk of the house is not visible from the street, but from the rear of the property. These are the floor plans. Um, the top one, garage would be covered walkway into the, um, top floor living area. Below the garage and also underneath in that walkway area, now there is an ADU inserted in that area and additional living area and then the pool would be out back. Uh, this is the roof plan, um, part of the part of the, um, undercounted area from the original design review was this connector roof, um. It wasn't clear that that was, um, well, I, it wasn't, it was just undercounted. So I, um, wasn't sure if that was full of waterproof and also, um, there were some plans that I I missed out on, but that area adds a a significant chunk of the overroom bridge for the lock coverage, that and the pool. These are just some sectionals to give you an idea of what the, um, of how the house sits on the property a little bit. And also there's a cross-section of the pool. Uh, this is the fire truck area, um, and the applicant included a a letter from fire saying that they can use alternative methods and means. Okay, so the project was reviewed Ju- July seventh, twenty twenty and recommended for approval and then granted a grading permit, uh, last year. When building permits were submitted for this project, the project included changes which require issuance of a non-conforming use permit. Um, the design review, the design of the house has not changed and so the twenty twenty review, um, still is is supportable and we didn't do another design review hearing board. Um, the project was determined to meet the Imola Hills design standards here. The project, um, needs the non-conforming use permit for three aspects of the RH zoning district. It requires, it has, it's asking for floor area of thirty-five point nine percent where thirty percent is maximum, thirty-three point five percent lock coverage where twenty-five percent is maximum and a one-foot front setback where twenty feet is required for the ADU, six hundred and forty square foot ADU on a parcel that's undeveloped. So these are the, um, non-conforming use permit findings. They were listed in the staff report of each one. So the first one is, uh, proposed development is proportioned to the size of the parcel. Um, looking at the three exceptions that are being requested. Uh, as for lot coverage, the the subject parcel is non-conforming and about thirty percent smaller than the minimum lot size of twelve thousand square feet for the residential hillside area. And the coincidentally, the amount of additional coverage is about thirty percent more than, um, than would be allowed on the property. Um, as I mentioned, the the coverage is largely created by the roof connecting the the, um, house and the garage. And it is a factor of the shape of the property and also the geometry of the property. Um, the floor area again is is that's being asked for. Um, if you looked at just the footprint of the house and the garage, the floor area that's proposed would comply with the the standards, but, um, oh, I'm sorry, I think it's about two hundred square feet over. Um, and but the floor area is greatly increased because in the RH, um, district, any covered area, waterproof area that's greater than four feet from a wall is also counted as floor area. So all of the covered walkways count as a square area. Um, and there were some covered torches, um, although they've been scaled back, but I think there's just a couple that still count towards, um, floor area. In addition, the garage canilevers out and creates, um, covered waterproof area underneath there. So that is also counted towards floor area. Um, as far as setbacks, um, the new California laws do allow ADUs in the front setback, but only when there's no place else to put the ADU. And since this parcel is fully undeveloped, it was harder to make that finding that there's nowhere else to put it because it was just designed this way. Um, and so, but but you can have the ADU there with the, uh, with the use permit and the ADU does not, it's hidden, so it doesn't add to, um, additional lock coverage. Uh, the applicant had to try to acquire land to reduce the non-conformity. That option was not available. The proposed development is nearly in performance, but the zoning regulations is currently in effect as possible. Um, as I previously mentioned, that the parcel has strengths, the slope, which forces garage at the front, a narrow curve which pushes the house further back. Um, and the distance between the garage and the residence is about thirty-one feet, which would be, um, a fair amount to have uncovered. Um, and then removal of the roof would change the design of the house. The proposed development is nearly in performance, um, as possible that that related to the pool, but the pool, an in-ground pool rarely contributes to, um, lock coverage, but in this case, there is a cross slope. And so the pool will be almost, will be exposed on on some sides and more than eighteen inches from grade and therefore counts towards lock coverage. And as far as the ADU, the ADU is smaller than what is allowed, the eight hundred square feet. And as I said, it's it it doesn't really contribute to the development, um, because there's already development in that location at one feet, one foot from the property line, um, the garages and that the ADU won't be visible on the street. The, um, that the use permit is not, um, injurious to the neighborhood. Uh, there was a comment about, um, about county fire in a in a letter from a neighbor. And, uh, it has been confirmed that county fire is still supportive of the alternative methods and means. And they have not, uh, altered their their preliminary approval of the of the planning series, the review of the project. And no other reviewing agencies have concerns about the project. And the use permit does not constitute granting of special privileges. Um, I've been before you many times about Imola Hills properties, which are substandard requesting use permits. Um, this property, um, is similar to other properties that need exception for lock coverage or, um, floor area and 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 the ADU setback. And it's not, we find that it's not granting of special privilege. So, um, the grading, the grading permit, uh, there was a little bit additional grading for the for the pool, but that was just like a minor modification and and the project still meets the grading standards. So in closing, the, um, staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the design review permit, non-conforming use permit and grading permit for county file PLN two thousand nineteen dash zero zero four hundred, based on the, um, find findings in attachment A and also find that, um, the project is categorically sent to us.
Thank you, Erica. Thank you for providing the drawing of the house. Questions? Questions for the?
I do.
Commissioner Hansen?
Is it a two-car garage?
It is a two-car garage.
How do you get the second car in?
I, the designers here.
Okay. Thank you. That's all your question.
Commissioner Ketchum, you have question?
No question.
No, I don't have any question. So is is the applicant here? So would you like to speak? Okay. So you have fifteen minutes. Wow, okay. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Fred Herring. I'm the project architect. And I'd like to amplify a little on some of the things that Erica's report was real complete and let you know that all the various departments have again reviewed this project and have approved it for you guys to pass it. But maybe before I do that, I'll I'll respond to your question of how you get the second car in. So the the answer to that is the garage, as you can see, a parallelogram. When I submit a parallelogram because of the configuration of the lot, I also show independently within the site, the floor plan, how the two nine-by-nineteen spaces fit.
Mm-hmm.
And then when you back directly out of that, you're onto an expanded piece of paving that's on the client's property first and then in the public right-of-way and then you turn and go up the street. That 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 same question raises the issue that's been raised by others about the area at the bottom. This is a lot where the paving over time has encroached seriously on my client's property. So almost half of what is seen if we drive up there together, what appears to be the public road is very significantly on my client's property. One of the can, one of the, not a condition, but one of the suggestions during the design review process, it actually came from Diana at Public Works, was to make it clear for the future where that property line is. So that there's a change in the proposed paving. Here comes the asphalt paving of the public street and we reach my client's property and from therein it becomes concrete pavers. But it's also a question of, this is a public road. It's a very narrow road. The fire marshal was at pains to tell me that in his view, the real issues weren't about at the end of the road is how do I get my anything down the road? Because it's like previous project, end of a little tiny road. In any event, that road also contributes a lot of water that lands on my client's property and off the end of the public road into the public or extension of the paper street. So where that paving change occurs, there's a deep trough drain. So I capture that so I don't have to deal with it later on where my house sits farther back on the property. But that's the the answer to the those beginning questions. But the other, the other questions are, I think Erica answered very fully. The overages are largely the results of the kind of eccentricity of the of the way things are counted as coverage and as floor area. The increase in floor area is very significantly that covered walkway coming in. The increase in coverage is very largely the pool at the back. And the pool, if you look at my model, it I haven't, I have remodeled it to show the ADU, which fits entirely beneath the garage and the walkway coming in so that the footprint of the building didn't change when we added the ADU. The coverage increases with the pool, but the pool also gives But the pool also gives me some fill material that the expansion of that turning area in front of the house, I have a way to fill there without having to truck it up this tiny little road. So in a sense, the increase of grading between the design review approval and this application is actually a benefit for both my clients and their neighbors who will not see these trucks going up and down. I think that's substantially it. If you have questions for me, please ask.
Can you take that model and show us which side is which?
Oh, sure. He needs to be at the mic. So why don't you give me an hour.
Um, well, you're owing to my terrible vision. You'll need to come closer. Yes, that's right. There's a walkway. That's right. And the public street is about like this.
Okay.
So this is the piece that we are adding. I've moved in. I've had a heart attack. The emergency vehicle rushes down there. It now has a pretty easy way to turn around. And major fire apparatus, not now, not ever, is never either going to go down the road or try to turn around there. But the other kinds of vehicles have lots of access now. It actually will mean, for instance, the immediate neighbors have a significantly better situation after the project is finished, not during the construction than they now have. The the ability, the the paved area at the, what is perceived to be the end of the street is almost doubled by this project. So may I bring it back to you?
No, I can see it. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead.
And thank you for bringing the model.
Yeah, actually, yeah, thanks for bringing the model. And my question is, what inspired you to came to come up with this design?
Oh, high the chance. It it's very like, I I I brought a series of photographs too, I might hand to you. If you have visited the site, you will have driven, just to get there, you will have driven by a series of houses that I designed. So it's not as though these particular building forms sprang to me only on this project. It's a gradual evolution of the approach to design that I have. The specifics are all very site-related. So that's how, as Erica explained, the garage must be at the front essentially. House must be at the back and it must step down. That's, that's, the ground tells us that. We don't really have a choice. You know, that's the kind of thing I tell clients when I begin to design a house on a hillside lot. I say, you have one voice, I have one voice, but the land gets two. And it, because it drives what you're able to do.
Right, right. Yeah, the 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 shapes are interesting. That's, you know, what I was referring to. Anyway, thanks.
Okay.
Question. You got your garage question answered. How cars get, second car gets.
I'm satisfied.
Yes. No further questions. Thank you. So do we have public speakers for this?
As a reminder, comments via Zoom will be taken first, followed by speakers in chambers. At this time, we do have one hand raised. We will start with Diana Nemirovsky.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, I'm a neighbor. I live right there on the corner of Oak Knoll and Live Oak. My question, I'm familiar with the architecture. It does go great with our neighborhood. Can somebody speak to the removal of the significant trees? What trees are those and what is the plan? Because one of the features of our neighborhood is the beautiful trees and I'd hate to see, hate to see us lose them.
Is that it?
Yes, just want to know about the trees.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I have a second question as well, which is just what about the precedent that this is setting for? Because many, many of these lots in Emerald Hills are nonconforming lots. And so are it, are you all okay with the fact that the next applicant that's going to come around is going to look to this one? Which may be fine. I'm just trying to understand the landscape of what the decision-making is here for the next project that may be asking for these same kinds of accommodations. And is that the slippery slope that gets us to changing the floor area ratios and lot coverage standards?
Okay. Thank you. We do have one more hand raised. The person's name is Jason. Jason, please begin, please unmute your microphone and begin speaking.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Jason Moran. I live in six, four, seven Park Road, which is a house behind that paper street on Live Oak. And currently, myself and my neighbors have some serious drainage issues. Over the past winter, our property six, four, seven and six, four, nine, behind the sewer sewer line that runs behind our property, the land actually sunk four to five feet in some places. The paper street, Live Oak Lane is actually like a, a good chunk of it is a seasonal drainage creek. And so with heavy rains, it takes on a lot of water. So I think we're concerned about like the the impact to drainage that this new property will have. Additionally, six, four, seven, six, four, nine and six, five, five all look at a series of trees across, across the the ravine. And so I think we're also concerned about the removal of trees, particularly with the addition of a pool, which will necessitate the removal of more trees that I think significantly impacts the the privacy that six, four, seven, six, four, nine, six, five, five enjoy from those trees. And so I think I'm also concerned about sort of the additional nonconforming permit. I think when we purchased in Emerald Hills, we had some expectations about, you know, what things could be built and what things couldn't be built. And we're essentially saying that we're gonna, we're gonna change what what can be built. And so I think the addition of the pool and the other things that sort of increase the nonconforming nature of the the permit, I think concern myself as well as my neighbors. And so, yeah, we wanted to just make some comment about that and you know, also concerned about the slippery slope that this will cause and the the loss of privacy will have from the removal of those trees.
Thank you, Mr. Moran.
There are no more speakers over Zoom. At this time, we do have two speakers in chamber. The first speaker is Edward Cox, followed by William Peraso.
Good morning. My name's Ed Cox. I'm a pharmaceutical executive, somebody retired now. And key attributes for being in this profession is integrity and courage. I'm going to demonstrate that today. I'm not sure if you had a chance to read my email that I sent yesterday. See a couple heads, yes. I am concerned about the turnaround that will be blocked during construction of five seventy Live Oak Lane. What Fred is proposing, I should mention too, that Fred designed and built six, five, six park road for us. I'm familiar with his ways. What, what Fred is posing is that a section that's now 25 feet that allows for normal cars, as well as ecology, cow fire, even Seminole County sewer that comes out to service the manhole in that area because it doesn't get serviced, it leaks sewer that can get into the rear year-round creek. That's going to be minimized from 25 feet to 15 feet, essentially making this unusable. Sorry, it's kind of emotional topic for me because I talked to Fred about this issue before making this turnaround unusable. And he assured me before Erica's design review hearing that we would have full access to this turnaround during construction. Now I'm seeing, thanks to my neighbor Bill, I'm seeing plans that do not reflect that. Yeah, I mentioned other things here about ecology. There's also plans for the porta potty. There's no way that porta potty will be serviced with a 15-foot turnaround. And there's no other way to get down this, getting down to this turnaround, it's 120-foot section of 10-foot street. 10-foot wide, 120 feet, there's another 40 feet, it's about 15 feet, and then it gets into this turnaround. Of, I seem to have 44 seconds left. I again, taking higher road, I did come up with the proposal. There's a paper road that goes around the property and Fred referred to it as a one-foot setback from an undeveloped parcel. That undeveloped parcel is actually the paper road. I'm suggesting that we extend the paper road around the corner to make that a permanent durable solution for a turnaround in this area. I'm concerned that after this home is built, people will park the cars in the garageway and won't be accessible as intended as a turnaround. Please refer to my email. And five seconds left. Sorry for kind of rambling. It's an emotional topic for me as I play. I'm happy to answer your questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Our final speaker is William Peraso.
Good morning. My name is William Peraso. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and thank you in advance for your thoughtful considerations regarding my concerns. In September, I purchased five sixty-six Live Oak Lane directly adjacent to five seventy Live Oak Lane. I'm not opposed to anybody building on their own property. And I have not opposed to the owners of five seventy Live Oak Lane constructing a house on their property. I am opposed to the construction of this particular house and is it as it is currently designed. It's too big. If it was smaller, I wouldn't be here today. If it was smaller, there would not be a swimming pool a few feet from my parcel, very close to where there was a mudslide in the 1980s. If it was smaller, there would not be the need to cut down six significant trees. If it was smaller, there would not be the need for two water retention basins. One of which is located near where there was a mudslide in the 1980s. If it was smaller, there would not be the need for nonconforming setbacks, nonconforming for area, nonconforming lot coverage. There sure is a lot, whole lot of nonconforming going on and all on a nonconforming parcel. This house is too big. Please build it smaller if you're going to approve it. It just takes up too much space. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Peraso.
That is the end of the comment. We have no more speakers.
So since there are no more public speakers, we close the public comments.
Any.
Yes, thank you, Chair Gupta. Just with regard to the concern about precedent setting, this commission is familiar with the nonconforming use permit process. It's been utilized in many instances throughout Emerald Lake Hills. So I don't think, just by virtue of the fact that we're being asked to approve a nonconforming use permit, we're setting any precedent. That being said, I think that there's some valid issues that have been raised by the neighbors that warrant your consideration and staff is happy to answer any questions that would assist in that regard.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for the staff? Commissioner Hanson, you have.
First of all, if I could, I'd like to address a procedural issue. Just to let you know, with the planning commission, when we open up for public comment, we just collect all the comments. There isn't any response to your question at that time. We collect them all to the end and, you know, and it's for us to ask the staff to those questions or not ask the searches or ask you. But that comes after we collect all the questions. And there were some assumption, I think, today that there were pauses waiting for us to. And that's not any disrespect to you. I did hear questions I want to hear follow up on, particularly the drainage. Someone want to know about the trees. We didn't present it. So I'd like, if possible, if we could present that and address the turnaround questions that was there.
Absolutely. And while Erica makes her way up, I'll just note that, you know, our standard drainage requirement is that new development can't change the amount or the velocity of water leaving the site. So you know, we're familiar with evaluating development proposals in lots of different areas of the county that have existing drainage issues. It's not new developments responsibility to solve neighborhood-wide drainage issues. It's their responsibility to ensure that they don't contribute to any worsening of the situation. And I'm sure that this development would be held to that standard. I'd also note that there's a similar condition of approval in this permit as in the last permit that prohibits construction vehicles and activities from preventing safe access along Live Oak Lane. So that's a requirement that will, the project will be held to. And so I think that really leaves the issue about the trees. And I'll let Erica address questions related to the trees.
So I looked at the conditions of approval. It looks like there were two native trees and four not native trees. On the site plan, you know, those people online make a look at the prepared package. It identified, I think in the staff report, there's actually a harvest report identifying the trees. It's just, it's, well, it's kind of hard for me to read the harvest report. Just do my vision. But there anyways, I was trying to show you where the trees were. Okay, there. Or can we get to a full screen?
There it is.
All right. Um, in your package on the site plan, there are Xs for where the trees are. This is at two or oaks. There is a requirement to replant six six trees, four of which will be oaks. There's only, it's like one tree being removed in the area of the pool. And I don't. It's not. It's it's pretty far in on on the property line, on the, on the applicant's property. So the owner, and so I don't know how much screening it would do from far away. Because it's not. Okay. So you can see the Xs on the site plan. And those, that would be where the trees are going to be removed. They're pretty much in the building envelope for any size home. You would have to know, I think that really the size of that home is, is impacting the trees. Based on the tree move is not, it's not exacerbating tree removal.
Yes, I think that's the main question, Erica. So we've got a modification here to a previously approved permit. And I think the question is, do these modifications increase the number of trees being removed? According to this slide that we have shown, the, there do not appear to be any tree removals associated with the pool, although you can see that X below the stairway to the left of the residence footprint. So I think it would, the commission's discretion be appropriate to ask the applicant about the need for the removal of that tree. The the commission's discretion be appropriate to ask the applicant about the need for the removal of that tree. Um similarly, you can see that um. In between the garage and the home on at the below. The garage in that corner, there's another tree proposed for removal and that is located outside the footprint and so. Um at the commission's discretion, you might want to ask the applicant about the need for removal for both those trees.
Alright, did you want the answer?
Uh yes.
I'm happy to say that those are both trees, the the process of the the permit review process. My experience with it has been the tree that Steve just pointed out. Below the garage and sort of both between the two volumes of the house. Is an oak tree, which in my initial application I left there. And because that's a tree that's not in very good condition and because it's close to the overhang of the building above. It was suggested to me that it would be expeditious or at least wise for me to show that as a removal. That's a tree I do not actually intend to remove. But the process that happens, if you don't show it removed at this time. I'm building the house and I find that this tree that already has health problems is damaged by my foundation and it dies. It leaves us in a much more difficult come back and ask for permission condition. I'm happy if the commission asks me to leave that tree and to leave the other tree. Anything that's not in the footprint that that anything that does not prevent us from constructing the house. And the other improvements, the garage and the pool, we'd like to leave them too.
If the tree goes, you would replace it with another oak tree on the property?
We, I mean, even if we don't, I'm showing the replacements, so. Tree lives all the better, tree doesn't live, we're providing the replacements.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Cox had a question about the turnaround after.
Yes, and um I'll need Erica's help with that if she's able, if not, perhaps the applicant is prepared to respond. It looks like Erica thinks the applicant's in the best position to respond.
I'll say one thing, I I talked to Diana at a few uh public works and she said it was, you know, a private. Situation, but from what what would be plans, I I'm unclear exactly what Mr. Cox's concerns are just during construction. But the turnaround in general is outside of um. Outside of any of his property and and it should, as as Fred said, the the fact that there's more. What's out there now is actually part of the property, uh in some of the paved area that that is being planned as the road is actually. Property owned by um Philippe and and Francois, so it will be modified, but I don't, I don't um. Construction is separate from the the developed road and so it the fire trust. Access would would be adequate and um. The Department of Public Works looking at the the um driveway profile from the road, so that those things are kind of resolved, but. Um I can't speak to like, I can't imagine that the the road is now gonna be too narrow for for vehicles, but I I can't speak to that. So Fred, you wanna go?
There's there's a there's a dotted line that that comes on to the property, runs in front of the garage and then runs around up there. That's the extent of the existing paving that's actually on my client's property. The the piece of paving that that remains within the public right away is the fifteen feet or so that Mr. Cox pointed out. And that will be there just as, so there is access to his neighbor's property. And one of the conditions that's actually set out on on, I've forgotten which of the sheets of drawings with. Specifies that, you know, anytime the road is going to be blocked. Temporarily blocked during the construction period, which inevitably that's going to happen. Here comes the concrete truck down the twelve foot wide road, it's it's going to block it until that load of concrete has been delivered. But we're committed to delivering notice to our neighbors saying, watch out on Tuesday morning. We're gonna have concrete trucks, so the worst case for those neighbors is the duration of the emptying of one truck. Before the next one comes in, it 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 is like the project you saw before, a re- a very narrow road, so it's. Leaves us with difficult conditions, both dur- entirely during construction, once construction is completed. The access and turning turning areas are much improved from what they are now.
Thank you.
Uh to 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 the chair, um can we have Mr. Cox come back up to the uh to the mic, because I think he has some clarification, could we, I'm I'm asking. The chair, yeah, yeah, come back to the to the mic, please.
I brought handouts of what I proposed, would it be hand handed to pass these out?
Yeah.
And so the other thing I would encourage the commission to consider before moving today is to contact Fire Department Tyler Stern. Who physically visited the site on uh June twenty fourth and at that point he expressed concerns to me and Bill about the area, including uh the turnaround. And I sorry, I forgot to mention that before, so what I was gonna point out in this proposal is that uh.
If you can make a brief, you know, please, yeah.
Maybe two minutes. Uh so what is gonna propose is that in in Fred's diagram up here, there's like a five foot section. That goes up to the property line, so when the neighbors. Part of me coming to live oak lane in two thousand and three put in this road, they didn't go up to the property line, there's like five feet, so instead of my. Fifteen feet, now I've got twenty feet if this area is developed and then I'm saying this paper road. That we continue down to end of the garage, that's what's shown in yellow on that piece of paper. Then that would allow a durable solution, have all vehicles turn around that area, whether or not the owners of five seventy decide to put cars in the driveway or not. Going forward, so my proposal was. Could we do something like this prior to starting construction that provides a durable solution? And then the other thing is by having that uh paper road extended. That tease up, excuse for the excuse for the golfing metaphor, tease up future development of live oak lane, should that be something that the public wants in the future? This road is supposed to go over to Park Road where I live now and it doesn't, it's paper road. And by starting, that allows that to continue. I will answer any questions you have about the proposal.
Yeah, no, no questions, I don't think, thank you.
Thank you. Uh does, did you give a copy to?
I I have.
Okay, no, does. Does Mr. Heading have a copy of this? Cause he's he's the interested party, right, so you you can work it out among yourself.
Well, uh uh it the permission of the chair, I'd be happy to comment on the suggestion and with all due respect to Mr. Cox, I uh you know. Understand the desire for improvements to a shared right of way here.
Right.
But I I think the challenge that we face is that. We have existing circumstances um that the all the neighbors are have to deal with and. What obligation does this development have to solve what is currently a neighborhood issuing constraint? Um certainly, I think um the idea of making live oak lane wider is um one that uh. Seems to make sense, however, you you know, in. Areas like this where you have steep topography, the ability to achieve that widened road is. Often constrained by slopes, need for retaining walls, significant investment in grading and so forth and so. I think um we have a legal responsibility to ensure that any, you know, conditions we. Apply to the project are proportional to the impacts of the project, right? So I think it would be difficult for this commission to require that this individual project do a roadway expansion for the benefit of. The neighborhood if their project is not causing an impact that warrants such an extensive mitigation, so. Um I I think the question before the commission is. It is a project with the conditions recommended adequately protecting access and safety of the neighbors. Um and with regard to the fire department's uh review, I'd note that they have reviewed. The application, they've recommended conditions of approval which are contained in your packet.
Nope.
So, thank you.
Any other questions? Oh deliberation.
Where are we, were we asking Steve questions now?
I think we're in deliberations and and questions.
This is totally aside, sort of, uh that in this case for this project, the conditions of approval have the drainage section. Uh number twenty six to thirty six um. Prior to building. Submit a written narrative and plan by a civil engineer list this and it lists specific actions and corrections to be taken. I just noticed this because um and then also the geotechnical section has. Uh this, a list of additional studies and plans that are required at the building permit stage and. Previously, other times we've had um. All a mix of these, maybe we didn't see the actual uh geotechnical report, but it was more a. You know, is this adequate kind of a conversation here and it. It, I don't know, I had a mixed feelings about it, it was sort of reassuring to see these specific things there, but there was also the curiosity to see. Well, what report, what do the reports say and to connect it all? Uh and I just was curious as to how the decision is made, how to handle this in the staff report.
Right, so um when we have projects that require both planning and uh building permits, um. We process planning permits first, in this case, I believe it's the nonconforming use permit and the grading permit, right? And so the standards for the nonconforming use permit and grading permit require that this commission look. Get certain issues and make certain things, in other parts of the county, we have different types of discretionary permits. If you're in the coastal zone and you have to do a coastal development permit. Um or if you're, you know, in some other area where you have different planning standards that bring in issues related to hazards and have specific drainage. In this case, the design review and the grading permit, you know, don't necessitate that we address. Geotechnical and detailed grading issues at the time of the planning review, but obviously we need to address them at the time of the building permit, so that's why you see. Um subtle distinctions depending on where you're at in the county and what sort of planning permits are needed.
That's all.
Deliberations, yeah, uh I I think um over the years, we've looked at um. Several projects coming from the Emerald Hills area. And uh since I have experience in that area, because I built houses around there. Um I always come back to say that it's challenging to build around there, so. And and so we've had several projects where we have to look at, you know, granting certain exceptions in order. For the people to be able to uh fulfill their project. I think that that's the same case that we have before us right now. Um it is a challenging um topo- topography. Uh that we have to look and and see, you know, if we can grant those uh special conditions. Per my uh understanding of what we have before us, I think uh it's a good project overall. Um and I think there's uh important issues that have been brought up, but I think that. You know, like the width of the of the street. I I don't think that the uh the applicant should be forced to deal with having to widen the street. That's nothing to do necessarily with the project, ideally, it would be better if. The county at some point and and the neighbors get together and and decide to wanna do that project. But I don't think it's related to this particular project, so. Anyway, that's what I would like to contribute.
Commissioner Hanson.
Sure, um I think Commissioner Ramirez pointed out a the very obvious things, you know, it's. The property at no time was conditioned to provide a turnaround. You know, there was a turnaround there because it was an opportunity. But there was no requirement for that turnaround to be there and it's not. Off dependent on the uh applicant to continue to provide, that's that's outside their purview. First, I want to say I've been dealing on city and county planning commissions this century. And this is the most bold imaginative thing I have seen, congratulations, it's uh. You know, earlier I was talking with a fellow commissioner about. You know, growing up in the sixties and seventies, we expected to see buildings like this and mostly I see shoeboxes with holes in them. So this is imaginative and. It is organic and it looks like it folds to the contours of the hills and everything else like that, I love it. Now. Having a diamond shaped bedroom, you put a square bit in it, that's your problem, it's not my problem. You know, um. You know, how you put cabinets in, it's gonna be an interesting thing, you'll figure it out. Uh. Uh as opposed to the exceptions, well, first, when you got unusual lot shapes. That's when you really deal with variances, for the most part, this commission never gives variances, you gotta, you you gotta square. Conforming lot on a flat surface, you know, no, it doesn't doesn't happen, you know, here we got. I don't even know how to describe the shape of what we got, plus we have steep topography. That's where various exceptions come in, you know, to make these things happen. And I think it was done in a very positive, unique way and it's a one of a kind thing, I don't see. What they're asking for being applied as a. Groundbreaking for all future developments, so I don't have a problem with any of them. Uh I'm not gonna be unsupportive at this.
Commissioner.
Yeah, I can support.
Yeah, it it looks good to me, so do I have a motion?
Yes, may may I just make one suggestion um to the architect or the um applicant that. You don't cut the trees that you don't necessarily have to cut. Alright, yeah. That's it.
So I'll make a motion that the planning commission approve the design review permit, the grading permit and the nonconforming use permit. For county file number PL and twenty nineteen four hundred, based on and subject to the required findings and conditions of approval listed in attachment A.
Second.
Roll call Mercedes.
Commissioner Hanson.
Hi.
Commissioner Ketchum.
Hi.
Commissioner Serrano Quan.
Hi.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Hi.
Chair Gupta.
Hi, motion carries.
Chair Gupta, uh can staff request a ten minute break, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Ten minute break, we'll be back in ten minutes.
The time is now ten fifteen and the planning commission is in recess.
Okay. So, uh, with that, staff recommends adoption of the E I R addendum as well as approval of the use permit and the fence head exception. Staff is available for questions. I think Julie from Cal Water maybe on Zoom. And we also have a representative from the Ascension Heights Development here. Should you have any questions?
Thank you, Camille. Commissioner Hanson?
With the new tank being tan, why are the slats green?
It's more just to blend in with the landscaping.
No particular reason, as far as you know.
I would say it's more to blend in with the landscaping, the surrounding landscaping. There, there's landscaping around the fence. So it's more to match, match that versus match the tank.
Okay. No more questions? Oh.
No, he's still.
Oh, you have one more?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, now I'm dealing with my memory and maybe it's getting faulty with age. But looking at the um, uh, diagram of the plot diagram of everything, did the side, the walkway on the outside of the house has changed since we last seen it?
Not since you've last seen it. No, there, um, there is a path.
Cause I thought it was a little farther down the hill, not right next to their property line.
Um, Camille, do you have a visual of the, they chose the location of the access pathway, the walkway in relationship to the tanks?
Yeah. But, you know, dealing with this project for fourteen years and it's changed so much.
Right, and I
Anything showing up?
Okay. Um, so I recall that the alignment and design of the pathway came up in prior hearings related to the grading permit. And my understanding is there's been no revisions to the alignment since the commission authorized the grading.
And that was the one we agreed on on?
That's correct.
Okay, cause
Cause this is right?
Thank you.
Yes, um, and I, Commissioner Hanson's referring to a component of the Ascension Heights project that provides a walkway.
Right, right. I remembered that.
Right, so that walkway is still gonna be provided by the project, the water tank um, project that's before you today doesn't have any.
Really, it has something to do with it, but I said, I don't remember. Really, it has something to do with it, but I said, I don't remember being that far up the hill.
Now we have the Ascension Height representative too, yeah, if you want. I want any questions on that, okay?
What's before you today is totally with, I'm sorry, it's Mark Hazel with CHS Development. What's before you today is totally within the Cal Water fence fencing and property. Nothing in this is changing the landscape plan, which has landscaping, the conservation easement.
I didn't think it did.
All that kind of stuff around it that you have looked at and approved in the past. As far as the, any pedestrian access or vehicle access to the Cal Water site, nothing, nothing has changed from what, what has already been approved.
Okay.
There, there were some trees on our property that were close to this. Some died in the drought and a couple were blown down in the storm back in, I think it was October. And we have worked with communal to come up with a plan for replacing those trees.
Thank you. You have more.
Can I have a question?
Yes, sir.
Would it be objectional for the slats to be saying tan as the, as the tanks?
We don't have any say over that because it's Cal Waters fence. We don't, we don't have any particular issue with whether they're tan or, or whether they're green because there's going to be some shrub landscaping and other landscaping around it as well.
Okay, thank you.
May I know?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks. Camille or whoever can answer this. Will, will this do anything to the Ascension project in, in sense of the time will affect the, the project of Ascension Height in any way?
Yes, they will need this water in order to follow out any indoor homes. That's my understanding.
Yeah, if I could expand on that, the project can't move forward until this water tank project is completed. So they've been waiting on this to occur in order to move forward with the construction of the subdivision.
I guess that, that triggers my next question. Why wasn't like both projects submitted at the same time so that they would be concurrent moving forward?
I, I think that the Ascension Heights development needed to work with Cal Water to secure all the details about what was required for water service. I think at the time of the subdivision approval, the analysis was, is Cal Water capable of serving the project? And the answer was yes, we've got the capacity, but we still need to work out the details of how it will be delivered. And I think in going through the, those details, it was determined that the additional tank was needed. Thus, we did the additional environmental review and brought back this permit to you. Because this, it was not known at the time of the subdivision that this additional tank would be needed.
Got it. It, it, it's kind of off subject, but I, I've been curious about how the Ascension Height project did with all the, the rain that we had and all the issues that, that, you know, that came up as far as like, you know, the landslide and stuff like that they had before and how it might have held up during the severe.
Well, I, I would summarize it by saying it was an intensive effort to maintain the erosion control and ensure that the, you know, amount of rain we received didn't cause damage to the property or to the surrounding area. I think it took a lot of work on behalf of the developers as well as the inspection team. But to my knowledge, there was no significant damage sustained.
Yeah, well, that's, that's great to hear. Thanks.
So Steve said no construction has started there?
Oh, yes, a great deal of construction has gone into preparing the site and completing the grading that was authorized by this commission. But we're at the point now where the water infrastructure needs to be installed. And so the site's been prepared and is ready for that, but we needed to complete the permit review process for the new water tank in order for it to commence.
Okay. And the, and this has to be completed before they can do anything?
Yes, my understanding is the access required by Cal Water to actually install the tank necessitates that it occur first before other subdivision improvements are built.
Oh, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Camille. Actually, I have a question for the applicant.
I'm happy to answer any of your questions, but I'm not the applicant. Cal Water is the applicant.
Okay, okay.
I'm just paying for it all.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. So my question is, what, what is the duration or schedule for this project? How long would it take?
For the water tank project?
Right.
Again, that's a question for Cal Water because they will be doing the construction.
Okay.
We have engineering estimates and we have a written agreement with them on the payment. We've already made about a half a million dollar down payment on, on, on the, on the tank.
And I've given you an estimate.
Yeah, Julie from Cal Water is, is on the line. And I'd also be interested in what their estimate on how long it's going to take and when they're going to start.
Okay, okay, so, so, yeah, let's, I was not sure who the applicant was, so let's have the applicant speak.
They have submitted their building permit still under review, so assuming it gets issued soon, then she can pick up from there in terms of construction.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Julie. I missed the first probably 70% of the presentation earlier because there were some issues with the audio. But I would like to first thank Camille for the thorough presentation. To answer the question on the scheduling for our new tank and booster, we are anticipating or we would like to start construction the first week of September. And typically for this type of facility improvement project, the duration for the work is about four to six months. That's factoring in weather and any sort of grading moratorium that we need to follow. But as of right now, what I have in my schedule is to start work after Labor Day and that the tank and boosting facility will be completed no later than mid-January. To answer your second question on the total project cost for the, for this project, we have already collected the first half of, of the installment. However, the cost estimate that I had provided to the, the client was something that was provided to them prior to or during the pandemic. And I know that there has been some shortage of material and also inflation and whatnot that we need to factor in. At the moment, I have submitted my application for the project for building review. And I had mentioned to Camille and also to the planner, the permit, permitting technician for the building department that I was going to also start the bidding process in parallel with the permitting process. And so as of right now, we are in the bidding phase and I hope to receive the total bidding costs from various Cal Water approved contractors for the work by, I believe, the end of the second to the last week of August. And then we would go back to talk to the, the customer about the remaining costs of the project that would be accounted for or deducted from what have already been collected by us. I believe there's also a third question on the fencing color, the chaining fence and the commi- commissioner had requested if that color could be changed out on the slate, we can make the accommodation to any color that would be aesthetically pleasing for the surrounding.
So, so what colored is the new tank?
It will match our current tank, which is a grouse tan, kind of like a I don't know. Kind of like the color of dry grass in the summertime when our hills turn brown.
Yeah, the picture we saw today was kind of greenish and, and human eyes are just odd when it comes looking at green. We're real good at assessing green as edible and changing. Whereas brown, we just seem to ignore and I kind of like to ignore the tank and the fence. And so I would prefer everything being tan. If that's agreed.
Yes, that's understood and we can make that accommodation.
Yeah, and, and is the other tank the same colors?
Yes.
Grass colors?
Yes, we will match both the tanks to be the same color.
Yeah, I think in my mind, that's more important. Great, thank you, thank you. Is there anything else you want us want us to know about this project?
I'd just like to add to that the subdivision project had already started some of the street improvement work at the top of the hill outside of our station. And to date, a portion of the new water distribution main that runs through the new streets for the new fire hydrants are also in the ground as well. And that's all I would like to add to the backgrounds for the project.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So. Any public speakers, Mercedes?
We do not have any hands raised at this time. We do not have any speaker cards in chambers.
Okay. So in that case, we close the public hearing. Comments deliberation among the commissioners?
Yeah, I'm, I am going to support it. I think it's necessary and.
Yeah, yeah. And I would like everything be the tanks and the fencing to be tanned.
Sounds good to me.
So do I have a motion?
I'll do that. I move to adopt the addendum to the Ascension Height subdivision final environmental impact report pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act and approve a use permit and fence height exemption, exception based on the findings contained in attachment A.
Second.
Roll call, Mercedes.
Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Commissioner Ketchum.
Aye.
Commissioner Serrano Quan.
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Aye.
Chair Gupta.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Congratulations. So next we move on to item number five. Mercedes, could you read that in for the record?
I have number five. The owner is Commons Hotel. The applicant is Zazi Chen. The file number is PLN 2021-00081.
Good morning, commissioners. So this is item number five for a, the consideration of a use permit for a new 18,715 square foot hotel, 69 guest rooms and 40 meter parking spaces located at 2567 Al Camino Real in North Pharaohs. And the project also includes a zoning map amendment to rezone one of the three parcels from R3, so that's a high density residential to commercial mixed use and then general planned amendment as well for that same parcel from medium high density residential to commercial mixed use as well. 2567 Al Camino in North Pharaohs. And you can see here, it's at the corner of Al Camino Real and Northumberland. You can see the three parcels there. The two that are facing the Al Camino are adjacent to Al Camino are already zoned CMU1. And the Northumberland property in the rear, there is R3 and that's going to be rezoned. And I also wanted to point out the, there's also a North Pharaohs rezoning that's happening as well. It's, Will is, is taking that on. That would rezone the two parcels in the rear. So not just the, not just the one that's already proposed for rezoning, but the one behind it as well to commercial mixed use. So it's consistent with what's being done for, for that project. You know, the three parcels shown. So here's the, the corner there. You can see it contains existing commercial. And there are also three units of residential. And, and these, and these parcels, they, this will all be demolished to make way for the new hotel project. Now you can see a rendering for, for the hotel at the corner. And Northumberland, all of the, it'll clean up the, the site. All of the power lines will be undergrounded. There's utility lines in it there. There's also to the landscaping and the public.
Can I interrupt you here?
Yeah.
I see applicant will be required for the new streetlights that are shown on here.
These are these streetlights?
Aren't those streetlights on this?
I think, yeah, I think those were just part of the, the rendering there.
So those are just rendered, they're not requirements?
No, the streetlights are not. The lamps. Yeah, but they're put the landscaping in. And so here you can see the overall site plan. So the, the hotel is in the middle. There is kind of a patio outdoor area and this is going to be in four, four stories. So the first level is the parking level and it's all going to be hidden underneath the kind of footprint of the the hotel. And they will also be utilizing lifts to meet that parking requirement in that small footprint. And so this is the, the parcel here that's going to be rezoned from R3 to CMU1. So, and that's just to make sure that all of the zoning is consistent on the parcel. The R3 actually allows hotel uses, so that isn't allowed use in the R3. The, the rezoning is, is really just for consistency for the, the main parcel there. It's the North Pharaohs plan. And there's also going to be grading work associated with the with the hotel matches for footings and to prepare the site. So project compliance, so the, the project, as mentioned in the staff report, is compliant with all the CMU1 development standards. There's also design review guidelines that have been elaborated on in the staff report, applies with the parking standards, which encourages the use of lifts. um, which encourages the use of lifts in um, in North Far Oaks uh, to maximize parking and smaller footprint and lessen the impact, uh, visual impacts of those uh, those parking garages. And uh, it meets uh, the general performance standards for the North Far Oaks uh, area. It's consistent with the uh, general plan and and North Far Oaks plan. And again, the uh, North Far Oaks uh, rezoning that's happening um, to intensify the uses along El Camino and Middlefield. Right there. So uh, as I mentioned in the staff report, all findings for the rezoning and general plan amendment can be made. Um, all the uh, the the traffic uh, generation, we approximately two hundred and seventy seven daily trips, um, which is less than the five hundred trips that would require traffic analysis. Uh, and because of the, you know, transient nature of the the facility, um, there's uh, no anticipated significant traffic impacts um, from the project. Um, so for the environmental review, so uh, as part of the the staff report, an attachment was a uh, consistency analysis um, that was prepared. Uh, it's basically almost a a whole environmental uh, document. Uh, but it goes through uh, each of the um, measures that were uh, in the EIR and discusses the compatibility if there's new uh, or if there's new uh, impacts that will be addressed. So um, the report that was prepared, I found that there were uh, no new impacts that will be introduced with the uh, with the hotel, the uh, programmatic EIR for the North Far Oaks Community Plan. Adequately uh, addresses all of the impacts um, or an increase in, you know, intensity along uh, El Camino. Any traffic impacts and uh, and other uh, foreseeable impacts. Um, so no uh, additional um, uh, EIR was required for uh, for this project. The recommendation is that the uh, North Far Oaks uh, Community Council provide a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors um, on the use permit, the general plan amendment, the rezoning and the uh, the grading permit. Um, so the the uh, Board of Supervisor will be adopting a resolution to change the general plan amendment, says destination. Uh, amend the um, the zoning code, the ordinance code and authorize of the law and approve uh, the use permit. So you will be providing a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors on this, those items. That uh, includes my presentation. Um, and I believe the applicant also need to to talk about.
Thank, thank you, Canoa. Uh, any questions for the for the project planner? Thank you, no question. Applicant.
I think we already have.
Yeah.
We already have it.
Oh, perfect. Yes. Landscape, if you want to see it a little bit better. Uh, good morning Commissioners. Thank you for your time. Uh, this is a project, sorry, my name is Dazhi Chen. I'm the uh, applicant here. My partner is Ben Ying. We've been working on this for, I think, just over four years. Um, and he is uh, wanted to be here, but just had a baby and is on paternity leave. So we apologize for not being here, but he sends us a picture of him and his family on the team page. Our architect Larry and Juan are on the Zoom call. They have experience with many limited service hotels in the Bay Area. As Canoa mentioned, we are proposing a uh, sixty nine room hotel on El Camino Real and Northumberland. And the reason that we're doing this is because we see that there's a market opportunity between motels on the lower end and expensive, maybe Rosewood or Stanford Court Hotels on the higher end. There is a lack of good o- good options in the middle. A friend of mine just visited from Singapore for a program at Stanford. And she was forced to actually find a hotel in San Francisco to stay at and make the daily commute, that there were um, no reasonable kind of mid-tier options. Uh, that is actually not uncommon. There, I know uh, friends who tend conferences here in Palo Alto and Nanjing Park and book hotels in the city because it's just cheaper. And so that's, that's a bit of a shame and I think an opportunity for us. So uh, we are proposing uh, the industry calls it a micro hotel. Uh, it's also, I think, uh, maybe appropriately, someone called it a European styled hotel, uh, which which actually describes it quite well. So rooms are smaller. There are fewer amenities like restaurants and gyms and swimming pools. There are shared common spaces uh, in our lounge. And and a more uh, uh, focus on on service. And so the crux of what we're doing is that we're building smaller hotel rooms uh, for our target customer segment. Uh, it's always kind of puzzled me why there are two double beds in a hotel room. It can't be that I need a whole bed to put my carry on at night. So given the cost of real estate in the Bay Area, you know, we think it makes sense that less real estate is used for a hotel room. And so we won't have a restaurant, a pool. Now, we're going to be narrowly focused on the single business traveler. So they'll be here for a couple of nights, barely have much time to sleep in the hotel room, I think, let alone hang out. Um, and so given that uh, we also have stacked parking as Canoa mentioned, so we save space on the real estate level as well. So we can fit about two rooms into the space of one uh, normal hotel room. And that gives us great economics also. So uh, we're looking at, I'm on page six right now, which is the cross section of one of the rooms. Um, I like to say that it's everything you need and nothing you don't. Um, so you enter, you enter the room from the left side and then the right side is is your window. That's the end of the building. So into the room, there is a uh, closet area to hang up your clothes. Um, and then there's a toilet and a shower. And there's a bench and a desk for you to do work, have a video conference perhaps, and then a bed in front of the window. So this is an earlier sketch. We are actually planning to put in queen size or king size bed into the room because Americans do like their king size beds. So because we are not a chain, right, we're not a Holiday Inn, not a Motel Six, we are a private new startup brand. We can decide uh, on the quality of the finishes and what we provide. There are no corporate guidelines being thrown at us from from another part of the country. So uh, our bed, our mattress, our linen, shampoo, soaps, coffee, internet uh, and service. We we expect to do all of those things at a much higher level than you would see maybe at a Hampton Inn or a Marriott Courtyard. So if you're familiar with W Hotels or maybe AC Hotels, that's the type of service and quality that that we are looking to do. Uh, but we will be able to offer it at the price by Hampton Inn because of our smaller sites. Uh, if you look at our second page, on page seven, uh, there is, this is the other side of the room. Uh, we will have a TV on the wall for video conferences or or movies and then a full sink um, in the room and then an area for you to sit and change your shoes on. Uh, so on page eight, uh, the vibe that we're looking for in the lounge and common areas is a coffee shop. Uh, maybe wine bar slash airport lounge. So a great place for uh, hotel guests, meeting, grab a coffee in the morning, have breakfast and also neighbors in the community to have a meeting, maybe their job interview, meeting with their uh, real estate agent. And we also have a deck on the second floor that can host events as well. So we want, we truly want to be part of the community, a uh, gathering spot, a watering hole. So we um, we're planning to host like music, book clubs, maybe open mics, uh, local uh, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts meetings. So on the um, next page, page nine, uh, our business model really is all about focus. So we are focused on that sliver of single uh, business or work oriented travel. And so who might that be? Could be a patient visiting Stanford or Kaiser. Could be a startup guy pitching and raising money. Um, I've done that. Could be someone interviewing for a job with one of the nearby companies. Been there too, or a small business owner meeting clients, calling on clients in the Bay Area. Um, so com- companies with large expense accounts uh, would not probably be traveling with us. And most of their employees are tied to a Marriott program or something like that. So we're servicing the small, medium sized or or entrepreneur individual uh, level of customers. So on the next page, um, so what's made it really great for Ben and I to work together is that we're really aligned on our values. Um, that with uh, as in regards to this hotel is we have a very high priority based on giving back. Uh, we feel fortunate and privileged to be able to work on this project. And we know that many people have helped us along the way to get us to where we are. So uh, giving back is 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 one of our uh, mission statements and one of our core values. And the way that we as primarily business people know how to do that is to create jobs. And so this will create at least fifteen full-time jobs with healthcare, with benefits. And our goal um, is to pay above other hotels in the area and well above other restaurant jobs in the area. And we will be prioritizing uh, these jobs for local residents. Residents of our uh, property today and also North Far Oaks community residents. So we would be delighted if people could bike to work or walk to work. And I think that would be a great uh, life uh, lifestyle improvement for people not having to sit in traffic. And so, um, right, in in helping fifteen people with with good jobs that they can count on and being treated well, we are most likely helping fifteen families. So that could be sixty, seventy people. And so if we can be doing that year in, a year out, we would count ourselves as successful. Uh, of course, this is a business, you know, it's not a nonprofit, but there are business reasons to pay employees well too. And and one of those is retention. So we're looking to have uh, you know, top, top quality retention for our staff and want our staff to be happy. Um, of course, with hotel guests uh, traveling and fifty to a hundred guests a day, well, they'll be looking to to spend for dining, beverages, entertainment, uh, rental cars, et cetera. So we think this will bring a considerable amount of business um, and and vibrance to the community as well. Okay, so on the next page, um, I did a rough calculation. I think we'll generate at least a hundred thousand dollars of uh, property and hotel occupancy taxes for the county every year. And then um, one of the things we are most focused on and and uh, very concerned about are the tenants who will be moved as a result of this. Uh, there are uh, four small apartments that are on the property. As far as we know, and as far as I think Canoa has researched, they are un- unpermitted and uh, unlicensed, so un- unpermitted um, apartments. I think at some point, uh, previous owner converted the retail commercial space and put in a few apartments there in the back. Uh, they are uh, not the, nearly the best places to live, uh, and they're not the safest places to live. Uh, there are uh, plumbing problems, floor problems, roof, wall. Uh, there are rats in the, in the parking area too, maybe largely from sending from the restaurant being there. So the building is about seventy years old and I think has has uh, truly come to the end of its useful life. Um, and so what are we doing to to help? Uh, we haven't raised rents since we purchased the property and don't plan to do so. We will provide at least six months notice to tenants. Uh, we will help them find and relocate to better and safer housing in in the neighborhood. We're going to cover rent increases for one year that they'll see from their paying now to their new property. Um, and also they'll be prioritized for job openings as well. As a restaurant on site, the owner has talked about possibly retiring or relocating. But if he doesn't, he um, will work with them on breakfast, beverages and catering for events. And if he is looking for a new location, we'll help him with with the marketing and uh, search of that location. So uh, I I think that's it. As as Canoa mentioned, we're fully aligned with Will Gibson. I think he was here maybe about a month ago, uh, both in terms of the rezoning and the general plan of commitment. Um, so I think it's, it's a good thing that it took us a little while to get here. Will has maybe paved the way uh, on that. So thank you for your time. It'd be a privilege to really be a partner of the community and 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 we want to see it succeed.
Thank you. Questions? Questions first?
Yeah, and how are you? Do we think that uh, the parking um, is sufficient um, what they are providing at this time?
Um, yeah, from a um, they meet all of our standards uh, in our, in our regulations. Um, that was going to be the analysis that was done and from the uh, you can see there's also the traffic analysis of in the I submitted with the the application, um, and it talks about uh, the the average daily trips. Then they're not going to be parking on the, on the street. These are overnight guests. Most of them are going to be coming from um, you know, the airport, be be a ride share or um, some other um, you know, taxi or you know, something like that. They're usually going to be doing their vehicles. Um, they are, um, there, there is outfit to parking for overnight guests. Um, but uh, but yeah, we uh, we we found that it's uh, the the parking is adequate to serve the facility and it meets all of our county regulations for parking.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson.
So the applicant of for the applicant, I noticed you had streetlights. Are you planning to put streetlights in?
Yeah, I was checking with our architect on that, that. Yeah, I was checking with our architect on that, that um I need to get back to you.
Okay, um because if you are, I like to design just to. But I also want to be consistent to what we're planning to have as permanent streetlights, so we don't have a mismatch. And I don't know if we have a design standard for that neighborhood or not. So that's another question I have.
Yes, I agree. Um and I think that um the streetlights will absolutely need to be coordinated with our public works departments. And so uh we'll make sure that any lights that are installed are consistent with other streetlights in the neighborhood.
And hopefully they point like down as opposed to lighting the skies.
Correct, yes.
You know, but I do I do like the design I did see. You know, we don't have a design standard. That might be a good one for the neighborhood.
May I uh add, may I add to that on? Yeah, um. As we are now uh in the process of doing middlefield, um we have um. A particular lighting uh design that I think the neighborhood is going towards. And so I would like if they are going to uh put in streetlights that they kind of coordinate. In that um sense of keeping, you know, with that.
Same for that.
Yeah, okay.
Uh if they don't put the streetlights, then the streetlights are needed, right, for safety reasons.
Yeah, I'm I'm sure that.
Night it's dark uh there. I don't think the lights inside the hotel is going to. Uh light the street. So then who puts the lights?
So the Department of Public Works uh maintains a lighting district for the area. So it is something that our Department of Public Works provides.
So as part of their permitting, lights are not going to be included uh or or.
I I think that um the applicant has an option of including the installation of lights as part of their project. And I think the county would uh appreciate their contribution to that effort. Um they will just need to obtain the permissions from the Department of Public Works, both regards to. The electric service needed to run the lights and the design to ensure consistency with the neighborhood.
Thank you.
And the only thing I would like to add is uh the applicant did reach out to talk to me before the commission. And we did talk and um I expressed some of my concerns, which were addressed in the presentation. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Yeah, I I had a chance to talk to uh app- applicant and both applicants. Uh Mister Ying was also uh there um. And kind of it it was a good session. And he basically went over the things that uh that are that are there in the presentation here. So it was and and I got my questions answered at that time. So it was a good meeting. Thank you. Thank you for that, Mister Chen. One question that I have is uh. Which which I always am curious to know is, wh- what do you anticipate as the duration of this project? Construction, um how long is it is that going to take?
So we hope it'll be between twelve to eighteen months.
Twelve to eighteen months, once uh all the permits are in place. Thank you. Thank you, Mister Chen. Okay, so do we have any uh public speakers?
We do not have these speakers, right?
Okay, no hands and no.
We do have two speakers in chambers.
Okay. Let's go ahead.
The first speaker that we will have is Libby Lynn, followed by Ann Chen.
Good morning, everybody. Uh my name is Ann Chen. I have been living in Redwood City more than fifty years. I'm so glad to see the Redwood City is doing very well. Thank you for everything you try to be part. The product of the hotel is look so beautiful, the product. I hope soon they can successful. And which have been these the areas you're looking beautiful and modernize. That's all I can say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I love my Redwood City. I think I keep still living here. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Our next speaker is Ann Chen. Oh, you're Libby Lynn?
Correct. My name is Libby Lynn. Um I lived in the North Fair Oaks for nine years. Uh I still drive by that area. Uh a lot and uh looking at the design, looking at the renderings. Um and hearing about the economic benefits, the new job that's gonna be created in that area. Um I'm excited to see the completion of the project and the uh the the economic benefits. And the honestly, a very beautiful building that's coming to that area. Um and that area, I I I think really needs an injection of uh. Of the energy and and the prosperity that's gonna come with this project, so um hope to see it uh also. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mister Lynn.
We have no more speakers.
Thank you. So so then we close the public hearing. Any questions, deliberations for for those commissioners, Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes, um thank you. You know, there there were, I don't know if you guys had a chance to read uh some of the comments um that came along. Um they were some concerns of parking and um affordable housing or housing in general. Um which, you know, obviously are issues that need still need to be addressed. Um I'm I'm going to support this project. I like um the proportion of the project. I think uh for what it sits uh on El Camino. Um I think is the right uh amount of building. I on El Camino, I think it it could have been even a little bit higher um for the area, because this is only a four story. And so I think that we we have, you know, in the general plan, uh we said that, you know. The intensifying middlefield and El Camino was the right thing to do. All right, um because I do have a problem with other projects that have gone significantly higher. And a one story. Housing areas that are totally disproportionate, eight stories, I don't think it's a right place to go. Uh and where is that one story residential area? So this, I think, um that's the right thing, the the right proportion. Um I think it will um. Uh help the economic prosperity of the area. And I certainly like uh the fact that you're um that you're gonna hire uh local uh. Employees to work. Um I think that that'd be the ideal situation so that they can walk or bike uh to work. Um so again, I I think it looks great. Um overall, I think you guys did a good job of uh designing it. So I'm I'm in support of it. So thank you for bringing this along. And I think it's needed because we don't have that much um of quality uh hotels in our area. So thank you.
I too are gonna support this. Uh I also echo what Commissioner Ramirez says. This is the low end for stories, you know, probably the sweet spot. Design wise, not project wise, you gotta make money and things like that. I don't know what's the ideal number of rooms are for you, but it would have been not six stories, considering how. Redwood City to the north is folding out and how it works into the neighborhoods and where we planning to go. So I wouldn't want to really go less than four. And I think it is a good designer, a very good design. And it will will change the neighborhood. It's what one of the things the zoning was designed to do, which has changed the neighborhood. And this really um puts the uh first step into it, so thank you. And I will, like I said before, I will be supporting this.
I'm happy about the microunits. It looks really nice, the design, the efficiency of it, and also your um. Your proposal to open it up for community events as well, so uh I'm very in support of the project.
I'm in support too. I I'd be curious to know how the parking works out. I, when I read your um. List of typical customers. I'm envisioning going to meetings on Sand Hill Road and all. I I don't see the buses being any help except for perhaps the employees at the hotel. But uh I'm probably way behind the everything with lift and all those other things, so I wouldn't know how they get around. So good luck.
No, the project project looks good. Definitely, I I feel that it would vitalize the neighborhood. And the thing that I like the most is that uh you are willing to um. Take care of the people whom you are displacing. Because that is so, so, so important in my mind. That you have that uh have value for people. Uh for for uh helping them out. So I hope you continue to keep that value in your mind. And and like Commissioner Ramirez said, hiring locals. And continuing to uh use, use their expertise. And and having them um provide services to you, that's great. That that is really great. So thank you so much for doing that. And so I'm, of course, I'm in support of the project. So do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion that the Pioneering Commission recommend to the Board of Supervisors. That they adopt a resolution to change the general plan, land use designation, or APN. Oh fifty-four, two sixty-one, two ten, from multifamily. Uh residential to commercial mixed use with a determination that the project is within the scope of the. North Fair Oaks Community Plan EIR. And that the project would have no new environmental impact, therefore, no additional environmental review is required. And adopt and then ordinance amending chapter two, a division six of the Sammentail County Corps Ordinance Code. Excuse me, to revise the zoning maps. Appendix A to change the zoning map designation for APN oh fifty-four. Uh whoops, I'll come back here. Uh two sixty-one, two ten, from R three slash S five. To family residential S five combined district. To CMU dash one, commercial mixed use. And authorize the lot merger and approve the use permit, county file number PLM twenty twenty-one eighty-one. To be effective upon the Board of Supervisors' adoption of a general plan map amendment. And the zoning map amendment by making the required findings and adopting the conditions of approval listed in attachment A.
That is a long recommendation. I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hanson.
Oh, hi.
Commissioner Ketchum.
Hi.
Commissioners Rama Kwan.
Hi.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Hi.
Chair Gupta.
I.
Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you to all our attendees today. And with permission of the chair, I'll go through our last few items.
Please do.
Okay.
Item six.
Item six correspondence. Uh the only correspondence to report to you today are the uh. Pieces of correspondence we received regarding today's items. They've all been posted to the website. Um there's no additional correspondence to report. As far as the next meeting goes, uh I'm not proposing a study session as we have five items, I should say. The August ninth meeting only had one item. And given that we're all meeting in person these days, I was able, the applicant was willing to move their item to the next meeting. So our August ninth meeting will be canceled. Um and we'll have five items on the August twenty-third meeting. They include an interesting one, which is an appeal of the director's decision to deny a request to unmerge. Two parcels in Emerald Lake Hills that were previously merged. We have a design review and non-conforming use permit for a major remodel uh of a house in Emerald Lake Hills. We have a coastal permit and other permits and environmental review for a new test well. For domestic purposes on a six acre site that's on the west side of Highway one near Pescadero. Uh we have two general plan conformities. One for the vacation of the road right of way adjacent to one oh six Los Banos in Moss Beach. And a general plan conformity for the purchase of two parcels on Middlefield Road in North Fair Oaks. Um so that concludes uh the the discussion of our next meetings. And finally, the director's report. Um there are two items coming to the board that I wanted to alert you of. On August first, next Tuesday, we'll be updating the board on the status of our response to. HCD's comments on our housing element update. And then on uh September twelfth, we'll be bringing the North Fair Oaks rezoning and general plan amendment. Which Will Gibson presented to this commission a few meetings back to the board supervisors. And that concludes my director's report. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Commissioner Hanson?
I think a future meeting, I would like to discuss the unintended consequences of um. I don't know, was it of a state senator, Scott Wiener's uh. You know.
SB thirty-five.
Yeah, I mean, we were like North Fair Oaks, we come with this plan where we thought there were certain amount of height and certain density. Based on old rules. And now we're we've got old ru- rules being trumped by different conditions. And if had, we thought about those when we were doing it, we would have recommended something different, I think. And yet, though, these are the unintended con- consequences. Because I I, as I understand it, we might have an eight story building next to a one story house. You know, and I I don't think that was anybody's intention. And maybe for Scott Wiener, maybe that was his intention, but it was never my intention when I was approving things and changes. So I like to have a discussion um and of which. So I like to have a discussion um and of which it could be just free form, you know, or whatever, but I don't know what our attention was going forward.
Well, I I think in regards to the North Fair Oaks general plan, I think we definitely need to take a look at um what we changed in the maximum heights and figure out uh when, you know, we're granting um affordable uh housing um. How much more does that add? And if we actually, well, put it out to the community to see if they, you know, they wanna reduce the heights even with the maximum amount of affordable housing, because I think it was totally uh unexpected that we would uh grow that much in certain areas. Um, you know, I think everybody was within the thinking of within the three to four to five stories in certain areas would be adequate. And, you know, taking a close look at the proximity of houses around um to really, you know, uh, one case at a time, basically. But with the situations that we have, I think we that it does call for a review to maybe um redo the heights in certain areas. Um, that's my take on that right now. So I'm I'm hoping that we do have that conversation soon.
Isn't it with density bonus, the the last one, I think the one you are referring to where we went so high up was because of all the density bonus that was uh brought in uh which made it completely out of our control.
The true, uh, is that I think that was the intent, uh, you know, or the thing that we were not uh aware of, right? But now that it's actually come come up as to what it can do, I think we need to go back and and realize if this is what's gonna push things way above what the threshold that we had said. So maybe we need to revisit those heights so that we can bring them down, so that when that affordable housing comes in, it doesn't overwhelm uh the area, the situation that we were not planning for.
Yeah, because one of the unintentional consequences may be we're really looking for, because if everything really is gonna be eight stories on Middlefield, let's say, and I'm just free-storming here, um will that actually end up changing the residential neighborhood into something different? You know, because of of this giant wall, you know, what is the consequences we have not anticipated? You know, we we did a a zoning basic, if we did this, we'll get that. And now that we've got new rules, I don't, I don't know, we thought what we get now in the future.
I think at the time we were thinking, okay, so we we leave certain things high so that if we get uh affordable housing, we can grant that extra within that limit. But now we've gone to that limit and above.
Yeah, because we need to schedule some time, so this could be a public discussions.
Yeah. I understand the request.
Yeah.
Yeah. Really.
Yeah.
I don't have anything else to.
But after the discussion, what should we change?
Yeah, I think um Commissioner Ramirez is suggesting that we lower the baseline allowed, which then would reduce the amount of bonus you can get, but I'm hesitant to go any further into the substance of this, because it really should be put on an agenda for the public to participate. So we'll find the right time for that. I'd also just note for the commissioner's uh knowledge that we do have the North Fair Oaks Community Plan ten-year review out. And I anticipate that height concern about height is going to be an issue that the community is gonna be interested in, and I believe that that effort provides an appropriate forum to tackle the issues that have been raised today.
Okay.
Correct, yeah, no problem. Thanks. Thank you for bringing it up, Mr. Hanson. Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Nothing else? Okay, so the meeting is adjourned.